Welcome to the candidate League of Women Voters of Butte County Candidate Forum Interviews for the Chico City Council Race. The seats in contention this election cycle are for districts one, three, five, and seven. There are 10 candidates. Shawn Morgan and Curtis Polka for District One. Anne Schwab, Stephen Breedlove, and Kami Denley for District Three. Lauren Kohler, Andrew Coolidge, and Randall Stone for District Five. And Rich Ober and Deepika Tandon for District Seven. The city council selects a mayor and vice mayor from among its members to serve two-year terms. The mayor presides over the council meetings which are held on the first and third Tuesday of each month. Normally, council meetings begin at 6:00 PM in the city council chamber, 421 Main Street. Meetings are also televised live on cable channel seven. The council establishes and adopts the policies for the city, and one of its major functions is the review and adoption of the city budget. Each candidate will be given one minute for an opening statement, one minute to respond to each question, and one minute to make a closing statement. Assisting me is a timekeeper. She is holding signs marked with 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and stop. Candidates, please abide by the time restrictions. It is now time for opening statements. Ms. Schwab, you may begin your one-minute opening statement.
Hi, my name is Anne Schwab. Serving as your mayor and Chico City Council member is a genuine honor. I value your trust in me to govern with transparency, fairness, and inclusive viewpoints. I solve problems, build relationships, and reach consensus. Through respectful listening, hands-on learning, and collective action, we make Chico a special place. My values of honoring our traditions, embracing diversity, and engaging in civil discourse are reflected in the decisions I make for our community. My top priorities are economic growth to help fund badly needed improvements to parks and roads, affordable housing, and ensuring neighborhood safety. With your support, I will continue to sustain Chico's values and be your voice for vibrant and safe neighborhoods, a thriving economy, and independent leadership.
Hello, thank you for having me. My name is Steve Breedlove. I'm running for Chico City Council District Three. I'm a father, a veteran, a gardener, and a community organizer who cares deeply about this community. I offer to bring to the table, to the city of Chico, to the city council, a bold agenda based on meeting people's basic human needs. I bring affordable housing, addressing the homelessness and addiction issue, and most importantly for me as a father, ensuring a habitable climate for our children.
My name is Deepika Tandon. I moved to Chico in 2007, and I've been a member of the community for the past 12 years. I am very blessed and blessed to be in this community, which is very compassionate and helpful, and I have received so much over the years. But in the last few years, I have seen a lot happening in our community that is not very positive, and that is one of the reasons I am running for the city council. And my hope is to save our parks in downtown and have a safe Chico free from needles.
Okay, well, thank you, first of all, for having me tonight. I never thought I'd be in this position. For the longest time, I had this limiting belief that unless you had wealthy friends or you were wealthy yourself, that political office was really kind of out of the realm of possibility. I've learned since then that that's not necessarily true, although I'm sure that it helps. But I want to start by saying I love this city, and I'm raising two daughters here. I want them to love growing up here as much as I did. But I'm afraid that if we keep electing the same leaders who refuse to compromise, that we are going to keep facing the same problems over and over again. And so my approach to council is going to be one of determined collaboration. This is a nonpartisan office, and I really want it treated as such.
Thank you so much to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum and for adapting it to keep the community safe. That is a huge priority. I'm Lauren, and I've lived in Chico my whole life, and I love it here, and I love the people who live here. I went to Butte College and then Chico State for my bachelor's degree in psychology, working at some of our great local businesses along the way, as well as as a behavioral health education specialist associate. I have worked for Chico Chi as a business manager and am currently working as a case manager, helping transition people out of homelessness. I've done research on homelessness and housing through community psychology, as well as community organizing around and education on better renter protections. I will combine my experience as a business manager, social services provider, and community organizer to bring thoughtful leadership to the city council.
I'm Shawn Morgan. I ran for city council eight years ago because Chico was millions of dollars in debt, experiencing out-of-control spending and gutting its police department. We managed to turn around, got city finances back in order, hired over 30 police officers, and focused on our mission statement: A safe place to raise a family, an ideal location for business, and a premier place to live. Chico's been my hometown for 46 years since I first moved into District One at age four. Of course, that's not what they called it then. I went to Chico State, got married in downtown Chico, and raised my family here. My personal history is rooted in Chico. I will not walk away while my hometown is in crisis. The last few months have placed a heavy burden on our families, our jobs, our businesses, and now more than ever, we need steady, proven leadership and a council that focuses on safety, family, businesses, and an optimistic future.
Hi, my name is Kami Denley. I am a born and raised fifth-generation Chicoan, so we've been here a while, and I'm a mom of four. So while raising our family here, my husband and I, this was the perfect community to do it in, wanted to raise our kids here, but recently, we've grown concerned with the direction that things are headed in our community, things like the needle distribution or the illegal encampments in our parks. We just feel like overall, decisions are leading to an increase in violent crime, and raising our kids here, that's something we're really paying attention to. So I just hope to give a voice to all the other families, all the other, the business owners, the teachers, and just be a voice for safety, for being a good place to raise a family and an excellent place to have a business. So that's my goal.
Well, thank you very much to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. Every year, this is a great opportunity for the candidates to mention what they're all about, and this is invaluable, especially during this misinformation time. I'm Randall Stone. I've served on the Chico City Council for two terms, finishing out eight years now. Under that period, we did things together like the alternative custody supervision. We banned Roundup within the city. We have 480 housing market race housing units. They're coming online with another 400 affordable, which are subsidized units, coming on board very soon as well. And so with my involvement with the League of California Cities, we've been taking that effort statewide, and I'm very proud of the many things that we've done over the last eight years together.
Hello, everyone, and first, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for putting this together and for sponsoring this event, as well as for all the work you do in support of democracy in our community. And I want to thank everyone who is watching this. My name is Rich Ober. I am running for city council to represent District Seven. District Seven is essentially South Chico. I have lived in District Seven for all 26 years that I've lived in Chico. I've lived in Chapman Town, I've lived in Mulberry, I've lived in Barber, I now live in the East Streets. I know these neighborhoods well. I know this community well, I know the people of Chico well. And for nearly the whole 26 years I've been in Chico, I've been doing civic work, and I have a vision for Chico that is exciting, that's forward-looking, and that I am very anxious to bring to the council so that we can actually start moving forward and getting some real work done.
Yes, well, thanks for having me here, even though we're obviously dealing with it in a different kind of situation than past years, and I appreciate the league doing that and going through the extra effort. My name's Andrew Coolidge. I'm a candidate for District Five, city council in Chico. I've lived in Chico for 27 years. I am a transplant from the Yuba County area and came to Chico to go to college, like many folks. So I've actually lived in District Five itself for 15 years, so I'm very proud of that and know the area around here. I have a son and a daughter, 14 and 18, and they've attended local schools. My son's starting his freshman year online at Chico High, so I'm really pleased to be running for council again. It was certainly something not, I didn't think I would be doing once again, serving on the council from 2014 to 2018, but feel that my community needed me to jump into this race and put forward myself in terms of making the city of Chico better.
First question. What are the most important challenges facing our city, and how do you propose to address them?
So I think that there's a couple really big things right now. Obviously, COVID-19, it's really, really hard on the business community, it's hard on all of everyone's mental health. So we really need to be paying close attention to the effects of that on our community and getting really creative with businesses and keeping an eye on our youth and the effects on them. And then obviously, public safety is a big one, with the increase in violent crime that the Chico Police Chief stated a couple meetings ago. We really need to focus on that. We need to find new ways to bring solutions into our community, bring services into our community, try to bring the violent crime down. And then I think the other big thing is just the relationships in the community. We really need to work on bringing everybody back together again with the goal of a beautiful Chico, and I hope to do that.
The number-one situation facing the city is solvency, and it's not something that people are talking a lot about, a lot about. The students are gone, the businesses are shut down through no fault of our own, but without solvency, we're going to go into a financial crisis, the likes of which we have never seen. And if we can't keep police officers and firefighters hired and the roads paved, there's not going to be any more business, and there's not going to be any more Chico. And it sounds overly dramatic, but that really is the situation we find ourselves in.
Well, these days, that's a huge question, because we have more challenges these days than we've ever faced before. So the first thing that I would say is that we have to keep people safe, and we have to keep people healthy. We're facing not only the pandemic, but now fires raging all over our region. Both of those things are going to have tremendous, already have had tremendous, economic and human impacts on our community. And recovering from these catastrophes is going to take great leadership and great experience. We need people who know how to actually get real work done. So as we create the recovery that will lead Chico into the future, we'll need to address a number of things. We'll need to address housing, we'll need to address homelessness, we'll need to address our economic recovery, and we'll also need to reinvest in the infrastructure of Chico, which includes our parks and our greenways, in addition to our streets and bridges and all. So it's a lot of work to do, but I'm confident that we can get that work done.
And we have lots of challenges facing the city of Chico, and particularly District Five. And with the district system too, you have to look at issues specific to each district now, because we do have individual representatives of each of those districts. So I would say Chico as a whole has some definite issues that we need to face and head-on, which I believe the council as a whole has been neglecting. One of those, of course, is our homeless and criminal transient issues, and I believe those are two very separate issues. I believe we have a homeless issue that needs attention, I believe we have a criminal transient issue that needs attention. In terms of District Five, we need definitely safer biking and walking paths, we need better roads, we need lots of things with traffic safety, as a big part of this district is Highway 32 running through it. And I think there's a lot of progress we can make along those lines to encompass all these issues, but we need to move forward on all of them simultaneously, both in the city of Chico and District Five.
Well, I would say there's a few of them that are kind of all tied together. One of the biggest things that's been brought to my attention is the lack of affordable housing that we have here. It seems like we've kind of grown in kind of a one, in one way, with mostly single-family homes, and we haven't kept up with affordable housing. And so we've got this kind of big divide where only certain folks are, can really live here, and we have a large, a large problem with poverty in Butte County. And so that ties into the issue with folks living with homelessness or living in homelessness. It's directly related to that. Another big issue, I think, is our lack of public health options for folks that are struggling in that regard. And I think all three of those, if we can tie all three of those together, that...
Our most pressing issues in the city of Chico is our economy, making sure that the city is funded for essential services, especially with public safety, police, and fire, but it's really a team effort in the city. We need to have safe roads to be a safe community, we need to have the support of all the administration. So making sure that we spend wisely and look for ways to increase our tax base through recruiting new jobs and looking to ways that we can help businesses grow. I will do that by being very fiscally prudent, and I have shown that through my leadership through the Great Recession, in making sure that the Chico's budget is balanced, and we have restocked our reserves so that we are in a stable place to face any challenges that may come our way.
Well, housing and homelessness, no question about it. This feeds into our greater problems related to vagrancy and how that's, how we manage that or mismanage that by not having housing first or permanent supportive housing. So these few elements are just so critically, the limitation on our economic expansion, as well as the affordability and sustainability, economic sustainability of our community at large. So housing, as it wraps into homelessness, and without question the budget, you know, I serve on the Housing Community and Economic Development Committee, as well as Governance, Transparency, and Labor Relations Committee with the League of California Cities, both dealing with housing and pensions, and these are the two biggest issues we've got going on. I've been a pension advocate, reform advocate my entire life, and I'm also a developer of affordable housing communities. So housing and housing affordability is my wheelhouse. These are the two greatest needs that we have right now.
We are facing a lot of challenges at this time, and it's very difficult to pinpoint one challenge from the other, they're all intertwined. When we look at it, we have housing concerns, we have economic development, we also have infrastructure concerns, and in addition to that, we have safety concerns, which are all intertwined. If we don't have houses and we have unhoused people in tents in our downtown and park, it does not help us to improve and attract new businesses and families, which in turn affects our revenue. So we need to address them all at the same time, because they're all interrelated.
One of the most important challenges facing our city is our homelessness crisis. We haven't been able to increase our housing after the campfire, and many campfire survivors are still struggling and are still homeless. So one of the, I want to do a multitude of things. We need some immediate solutions, so a safe campground that's outside of the parks with bathrooms and connection to services is one solution. We need a low-barrier shelter that people can go to to connect to services and hopefully get connected to housing, and we need an option for our Paradise folks who were burned out and are still living in RVs, but have RVs that wouldn't necessarily stand up to the requirements of RV parks. So we need to address all of those different things immediately.
Our most important challenge is getting unhoused folks off the street. The city council lacks the political will to build the sanctioned camps we need for transitional housing. We need to get folks into sanctioned camps because it's cheaper and it's more humane. I stand firm that unhoused folks have human rights that are being violated by this council, and I've been pretty vocal speaking out against that. In addition, the federal courts see issues with the way we treat our unhoused people as well. That is one of the big issues, and the lack of, the lack of action on climate change is another one. The city council had created a bureaucracy to manage the climate crisis when we already know what we need to do, and there's no meaningful action. When the science says we have less than 10 years to turn course, it's pretty insulting that the city council votes to spend a million and a half dollars to expand the airport.
Next question. If elected, what three steps would you take to put our city on a firmer financial footing?
Well, it's tough, in this time especially. I think that there are some things that we can do with very specific targeted revenue streams. I think, for example, roads. I think the citizens are much more, much more apt to be okay with a raise in some sort of revenue stream, whether that's a parcel tax or a sales tax, if they know specifically what they're getting in return. And so for an example, with roads, if you, if you had a short-term tax that had a sunset date that said, okay, we need to generate this money to fix this thing, we're going to, we're going to ask for more revenue for a short period of time, and it's only going to be spent in this way. I think that's good for the city and good for the city.
So one of the things that I would look at is each individual part of the city staff, and there are things that we can't do, like cuts across the board are not going to work because we have some things that absolutely need to stay funded, like public safety in terms of, and especially right now, our fire department. So being very thoughtful about the way that we look at our budget is going to be vital. And I am open to exploring some different ways of increasing our revenue through different, possibly, local taxes and supporting Prop 15 to increase our funding for schools. And, you know, as different options come up, I will absolutely work on exploring them.
The city is in a very firm financial footing right now. We have managed our expenses through some very challenging times to try to figure out what our income is going to be. Right after the campfire, we didn't know exactly how, how our funds would sustain us. As it turns out, we did manage those expenses very, very well, and we are very close to refunding all of our reserves. Been working very hard in acquiring grants and funds from the state to build infrastructure. We'll have $72.5 million coming to our community in the next two years to build housing and infrastructure that supports that, that housing and jobs that will come from that funding. We'll have another $40 million for developers to build that housing.
We really need to review the budget with a fine-tooth comb, first of all, and I look forward to doing that and getting in there and looking at what is essential in our budget, because that's what we need to do right now. We need to really buckle down, focus on the essentials, just do some common sense budgeting. There's some really great projects in the community. Unfortunately, if they're not essential, now might not be the time for them. We're already in the 8% deficit, and now with COVID happening, we can only imagine what's going to happen with the college being gone. So I really look forward to looking at the budget, making common sense decisions, and getting really creative about ways to bring new revenue in, whether it's bonds, grants, anything we can do to see an increase in revenue in our community.
Yeah, I think that we're going to have to look very, very closely at our existing budget. We're going to have to make some tough choices. When I was a park commissioner, I was on the city park commission for 10 years, including during the economic downturn of 2008, 2009, and the city made some, some very difficult choices during that time. And so I've lived through that as, as a civically engaged person, as a commissioner. I know what that kind of work looks like. And so there will be tough choices that we'll have to make at the budget level. But we also need to be as proactive and forward-looking as we can as we build toward this recovery, which I firmly in my heart know is coming. And we need to make sure that that recovery is as green as possible, that it embraces entrepreneurism, and that it builds Chico into an even more vibrant city as we come out of these challenges than we are as we go in.
Great question. Look, our employee costs are going up 7% to 8% per year. Okay, so the rule of 72, that means that our employee costs are doubling every 10 years. We cannot continue to afford that. The median household income in the city of Chico is about $47,000, $48,000 a year. The median home price is $389,000. That, that just doesn't make sense, and we have more city employees who are making in excess of $100,000 a year with employee costs outside of CalPERS pension changes. Employee costs are going up 7% to 8% per year. This, this community just cannot continue to afford that, and it's going to take a commitment to continue to adjust pensions. We've had some success on that front through a pension stabilization trust, but we've got a lot more work to do. There's no question that a reform of our salaries benefits needs to be had.
Well, our city's been on really solid financial footing since eight years ago when we slashed departments, we actually got rid of people, we furloughed people, we've built our reserves up very, very well, and we've been in a great spot. And if it weren't for the COVID pandemic, we would really be looking forward to a bright future. So we have to be strategic moving forward when there, when cuts come, and cuts are coming. There's a lag time, and this is the challenge. Most people say, well, you know, if we experience a 20% cut, we should just cut 20% across the board, and it's short-sighted thinking. We've got to be very strategic about what protects the things that create revenue for the city, and that is primarily businesses. So what can we do to ensure that they can continue to stay open and generate revenue that the city can wisely use?
One of my primary issues that I'm bringing is a lean, people-centered budget. I think that we're underfunding community development, and we are underfunding the Parks Department. To put us on a solid foundation footing, we have to pursue new revenues. I would begin a discussion on, number one, a public bank as one way to fund affordable housing and climate transition. Number two, seek to discuss and hopefully approve a gross receipts tax. Right now, our business licensing tax is deeply unfair. We're the most profitable companies, pay as much as the small companies because it's based on employment. Number three, we have to get the pension debt or pension obligations under control, and that means stop hiring police officers and instead use non-uniformed crisis intervention services, which have saved the city of Eugene $8 million.
You know, I served on the council from 2014 to 2018, and that was right after Chico was the eighth-most likely city to go bankrupt in the state of California. So, you know, I was part of the team that brought Chico back from a $20 million deficit, and I believe especially with the COVID issues we're facing in terms of the sales tax revenue that we're going to be missing, and however long that ends up continuing, we need a smart team of financial planners who can actually be focused on these issues and look at cost savings measures. So a couple of the things that I'd like to continue and move forward on from when I was on the council from 2014 to 2018 was like an LED light program that saves the city $250,000 a year. We put that, I brought forward that to council, and we were able to pass that. We need to end the tax sharing agreement in North Valley Plaza, but we need to be proactive and look at areas where the city can save money and move forward in a smart financial way.
In order to have a firmer financial footing, we need to attract new businesses for which we have to provide them good infrastructure and safety. Same thing when you want to attract more people to the town, and so we can have extra revenue. And so we can have extra revenue. We have a lot of houses that are coming up in the pipeline, but we want to fill them all up as well. And we want to attract good people. And for that, we need to provide a safe environment so people feel comfortable moving in here. Those are the first two things that my biggest focus is right now, because as a business owner, I suffer from that almost every day. And there'll be other things we'll have time allowing. And of course, with the help of the community and the other council members, we'll definitely figure out some policies to go from there.
What do you believe the city should be doing to shelter the unhoused?
That is a terrific question. We need to take care of the people that need to be taken care of. But we cannot solve homelessness in the city of Chico for the entire country. So one thing we have to stop doing is rolling the red carpet out for transients that come from everywhere. We got a large influx of them during the campfire because of all of the free stuff that was given out. They haven't left and we've invited more by saying, come sleep in our parks, come for needle distribution giveaways, come to all these things. The first thing we have to do is stop the migration. That's number one. Number two, we need to work with the nonprofits. I introduced the ACT initiative when I was mayor, Accountability and Compassion Together with Wraparound Services to help those that want help. And we need to help those that want help. A large majority of them, though, don't want help. And for them, we've got to show them a different place to go.
Similar to the proposal, Orange Street Shelter, I was on the board of the Safe Space Winter Shelter when we were pushing for that. We need housing first, and that is, is the priority. We need to get people housed so that we can continue to work on the, the problems that they're facing, whether that's drug addiction or mental health issues, both of which permeate our community. So what's necessary is additional housing. What's necessary is an inclusionary zoning ordinance, which requires that developers build subsidized housing, affordable housing within their communities. And that helps bring down the total cost of housing within a community and allow some of the, the other classy buildings being occupied by people that are trying to stabilize their life with the housing first model. And we are doing it. I mean, we incentivize to developers in every possible way, every tool in the toolbox to incentivize developers to build housing and if housing affordability exists. What we don't have is the requirement that the developers actually build this stuff. We're the only city of our size that doesn't have an inclusionary zoning ordinance, and we should.
I mentioned it a little bit before, but you know, we absolutely need some immediate solutions. People get frustrated and talk about Band-Aid solutions. And I don't want to stop at Band-Aid solutions, but we do need some now. We need to create, you know, immediate shelter, especially as, as winter is coming up. We need to be looking at ways to partner with nonprofits and the county to create a safe campground and a low barrier shelter. And again, a place where people can park RVs and trailers that they do have. As well as work to increase affordable housing. Because we have a very, very small amount of affordable housing, especially compared to what we were supposed to get here in Butte County. So we really need to make that one of our number one priorities.
Yes, I already touched on this. There's no political will to build sanctioned camps. And that's unfortunate because as a veteran, I spent time in Afghanistan during Obama's surge. They built a city for fifty thousand people at the base I've stationed at later in Bagram. And they were able to build a city for fifty thousand people in a matter of months. As well, I've worked in fire camps for the U.S. Forest Service as a contract air traffic controller. And they are able to stand up logistics centers in a matter of days. It's a matter of political will and a matter of assigning some money to it. In my napkin estimates, we can house about fifty people in a humane camp with bathrooms, showers and garbage cans to keep the trash out of our creeks. And we can do that for less than a hundred thousand per fifty bodies. Thank you.
That's a complicated one. Because we have, there is not one solution that would fit all of them, because everyone has a story. Everyone has a different situation because of which they are unhoused. So I believe it would be a good idea for us to have a dedicated place with the wraparound services and then try to individually see what the situation is and help them accordingly if they need rehabilitation or if they need to go for drug rehab or if they need to connect to veteran services or, or just an economic help, because a lot of people come into the situation because they are just a paycheck away from. They just had a medical emergency, car broke down, just couldn't get to work, lost a job, become unhoused. And then we also have people be, because of the fires, they are struggling as well. So I think we need to go individual by individual and try to find a solution that fits them best.
Well, I think a lot of the things that are happening now, or at least are in the process of happening are really are, are good. I was very pleased to see the, the hiring of Suzie Kokums, I hope I'm saying that right. And a lot of the things that she said were, were things that I had, had also believed as far as the kind of things that it's going to take to, to make an impact. And so it's a, it's a complicated problem and it takes a collaborative solution that, that handles things from a lot of different angles. And so I was pleased to see that the city is, is working on a longer term either, you know, legal campsite. I saw that they had written a letter to the state to temporarily use the, the fairgrounds. And I thought that was a reasonable and good request. I hope that goes through. And so, again, it, it's going to take a collaborative approach from, from stakeholders from the county.
This is something that I know well. As I, as I've mentioned, I've been engaged in Chico civic work for more than 20 years. I've served on the Torres Shelter Board of Directors, now the True North Housing Alliance Board of Directors for six years. I've been chair of that, that board for a number of years. And I've also been serving meals at the Torres Shelter with a volunteer group for more than 12 years. During the sit, the, the current shelter in place requirements, I've been out in those encampments and I've been working directly with the people who are faced with being unhoused. I know these issues well. We need three things immediately. We need a city sanctioned campground. We need a, we need to create three hundred new shelter beds by the first of the year. I believe we can do that and I have a plan in place that will allow us to do that. And we also need to move forward immediately on Simplicity Village and building small home communities so that we can get people housed and off the streets.
Well, I think one of the things that we really need to do is move forward with Jesus Center and the new location. I think that's essential. And I'd like to see that process move forward as quickly as possible. I think putting it by the Torres Shelter makes a lot more sense, bringing in county services to help people who need help. And then, you know, of course, addressing housing in terms of the long term. And while I don't necessarily support inclusionary zoning, I do support bringing in builders who specialize in low income housing. And there are a lot of builders throughout the state of California that do that and specialize that in that. We need to bring more of those folks to the table in Chico, the ones who have the skills to get the grants, to get the funding and be able to build locations which can house the homeless and also move forward with, you know, making land available for them to do that. So I think those are all important steps that we can take, both on the shelter side and in terms of long term housing.
So I like to address this by starting by saying what the responsibility is of the Public Health Department, in our case, Butte County Public Health. It is their job to address hazards in the community, quality of living, mental health, addiction, all of the issues that are leading to homelessness in our community. It really falls under the umbrella of public health. Because we don't want to just throw Band-Aid solutions. We want to actually solve the underlying problem. And Butte County Public Health is equipped to do that. I don't believe the city of Chico is equipped to do that. It's our city government's job to maintain the roads, to look over building requirements. And it's just not, the public health isn't in the city's realm. So I think that we give such a serious issue to the experts. And I would recommend that Butte County Public Health develop some wraparound services and we collaborate with them.
For a long time, I thought that the city could rely on our state, federal and county partners and nonprofits to house the unhoused. It has become increasingly clear that if the city wants to address it, the city needs to step up. I think that we need to continue to partner with those government agencies and our nonprofits. The city has been, but, but to really be successful and to make sure that our economy is stable going forward, I think it's important for the city to invest in a shelter location. We're very close to identifying the location and working with our county and nonprofit agencies to provide that physical location so that we can help people transition to a more permanent housing.
How can the city reduce its dependence on fossil fuels and reduce its carbon footprint?
You know, this is actually one issue that I thought was very important when I was on the council. And unfortunately, I, you know, it's your one of seven when you're out there, so you don't necessarily get everything passed that you want. What I saw is certain counselors, you know, voting to increase the fees for, you know, for solar going on people's homes. And I think it's very important that the city reduce the cost and the city fee for solar on people's homes in the city of Chico. Likewise, I also think it's very important that the city of Chico move to more solar. We have land, whether it be our, the airport or throughout the city or the corporation yards where we have large rooftops. Those all could be put into solar power and be benefiting the city and reducing its carbon footprint in a big way. So I think we need to move forward on that. And then we also need to move forward in terms of looking at where we can save the water, where we can save resources, like the streetlight program was something where we could save electricity and bring down our carbon footprint as well.
You know, carbon footprint is not just from the power energy, my, is what my opinion is, which definitely is. And, but we need to try to reduce it in all other areas as well. We just cannot focus on energy is one thing, you know, how much plastic we use in cutlery, to-go boxes and plastic bags. They all are part of the footprint. And of course, we do have, all of us have energy star equipments in the house. And it's not a feasible solution to tell everybody to just change all your appliances and get the solar. I cannot afford to go buy all new appliances that are electric. So it should be done in a series of ways, but I believe that we should focus on reduction as well as not just on the recycling, because recycling is a part that reduces, brings a lot of carbon to our environment as well.
Number one, I think we need to use both carrots and sticks to ensure that landlords that have dilapidated housing weatherize those houses. We seek the funds to do so, as well as a public bank could be one avenue of providing the financing for weatherizing our homes, because that's seventeen percent of the county's greenhouse gas budget. I'm active in agriculture. I think we need a local food system and we need to legalize food-based businesses in all areas of the city. Because our food mileage is something that often goes overlooked and it also leads to better health outcomes for our community. And number three, I'm bringing a neighborhood electric vehicle ordinance. I've spoken to the city about it before. And a neighborhood electric vehicle ordinance is a better way to transition to electrified transportation than relying on big companies like Tesla to produce very expensive vehicles that we will never be able to afford. Thank you.
Well, we're certainly doing that now. There's no question solar, like every community, especially on the West Coast is, is attacking that. We still continue to subsidize the development impact fees for solar and, and other methods. But, but this, this community builds class four bike lanes and that has been an extraordinary impact on our traffic needs post campfire, as well as the current other disasters that we've been involved in over the last three years. So the investment of classy, or class four bike lanes is essential. We've got twelve million dollars going in to link north and south Chico. That's the dependence on, on fossil fuels. We now have a standing climate commission, which I pushed through when I was mayor, that looks at everything that the city does, both internally and externally, with a mind towards how is this going to be, impact climate change and what can the city do to mitigate that? It's really extremely uncommon for, for such a committee to exist within a jurisdiction. And I did that as mayor with making us look at development standards as well as internal city operations and addressing climate change.
It's a lofty question. So I think that though while wanting to look into our carbon footprint and wanting to take better care of our earth, I think it really is a noble thing and a very smart thing to keep an eye on. Very big on the environment, protecting what we have, like Bigwell Park, our creeks, our greenways. We're blessed here in Chico with our environmental jewels, really. And I just think it's important to realize that we need to take care of our own right now and try to tackle lofty global climate issues, carbon footprint issues. Right now, in a time of a budget crisis, I think that might be a little too lofty to be focusing on. We need to protect our parks. We need to protect our creeks and our greenways. And I think once we get a really good control of that, then maybe we can move forward and focus on some bigger, bigger umbrella issues of that topic.
One of the ways that I would like to do that is working on infill development. So, you know, if we're building housing that is closer to things that you do every day, like, you know, the grocery store, work, restaurants, then you're not needing to drive as much. You can walk or you can bike. I also want to make Chico more bike safe. We have the bicycle plan that, that we need to follow to ensure that we're making it safe to ride your bike all over Chico. And, you know, it is getting safer, but working on that is absolutely important and ensuring that all of our development makes, makes sense. And in, in little ways, like where we put the windows in our new developments and making sure that we're taking that into account with all of our decisions.
The city already has taken great strides in reducing its carbon footprint. I was the chair of the first sustainability task force where we wrote a climate action plan, a goal to reduce our carbon footprint to twenty-five percent less by the year 2020. And it looks like we are on track with that. But that was some of the low hanging fruit. Our new climate our climate commission is looking at other ways that the city can be a leader. It comes through good planning so that we have housing that is close to workplaces, close to schools, so that we can have a less dependence on the automobile. Moving forward to creating better bicycle infrastructure. We are a League of California's gold rated city. We're making great strides in that area, but we need to continue to press forward to make sure that our city is well planned and less dependent on the car for transportation.
Well, you know, if you go back to the Nationwide Renew Deal, I'm, I'm no expert in that. I will be the first to admit it. I think there are some elements in there that, that I am familiar with that seem to make sense as far as, as reducing carbon emissions, you know, renew, using renewable energy and making investments in that. And the, the idea behind that is that there's job creation as well. And so I think there are some ways, again, I, I don't think it's perfect. But I think there are some things in there that will solve more, that will solve more than one problem, right? It, it can help with unemployment. It can help with, with that carbon footprint as well.
Yeah, this is, this is really, really critical and I talk about it all the time. I believe that every decision that the city council makes, that the leaders in our community makes need to be green decisions. And what I mean by that is to make actual policy. And I have experience in doing this kind of work. We need to have actual policy that will create a, a future that is greener than, than the one we live in now, because we are, we know better maybe than anybody. Because we are, we know better maybe than anybody what climate, the climate catastrophe looks like with the fires and all that we're dealing with. And so I think that the city fleet, for example, I'll give you a couple of examples. The city fleet should be transferred, transformed into an electric fleet to the extent possible. There are certain vehicles that may not be able to be, but to the extent possible by 2030. I think that we need to invest in solar arrays on all city properties, including city parking lots. I think we need to embrace alternate modes of transportation. We need to develop our bus system more fully so that people can get to where they need to go without getting into their personal cars and driving from place to place.
That is a weird question. Well, we could go to all-electric vehicles, and we could all bicycle to work, and we could join the Stone Age and go with the Green New Deal that is being perpetuated by certain members of Congress and the Senate, which would absolutely destroy the American way of life. So I wouldn't recommend it.
If you are elected, how will you solicit input from areas of the city outside your district?
That's a great question, because the district situation, the districts in Chico is brand-new to everybody. So I think that will be critical to everyone. And having been engaged in all of these, I've served for 10 years on the Park Commission, as I mentioned. I'm currently on the Planning Commission, City of Chico Planning Commission. I've been doing that work for two years. I have been for the past year on the Butte County Housing Authority Commission. I've also, as I mentioned, been on any number of boards and for, for local. And that work has meant that I have had to build the structures, the relationships and the patterns in how you do civic work in order to engage with people, in order to, to have not just an open door policy. That's easy to say, but to know how to reach out and ask the important questions and be available as you're doing civic work. And I think we need people who have actually done that already right now. More than ever, experience matters. And so we need our leaders to know how to actually engage and to reach out, as you say, beyond the districts and so that everybody in Chico knows how to engage. And I have the background to be able to do that.
Well, I think that's great. This is an interesting thing that we're stepping into in this district environment. I think it's a fantastic setup in the sense that even if you are bringing a piece or, or an issue or an idea that is coming from your district, it's so nice to bring that to council and have different perspectives. Because what might work very well in District One may not work for District Seven. And so I think the collaborative approach on council ought to be that we take the best ideas from all of these, from all of these, all of these different districts, right? And I'm actually kind of looking forward to some healthy competition between districts to say, alright, who's gonna, who's coming up with the best ideas, who's got the coolest, you know, the coolest ideas for, for solving problems? And so I really think this is gonna be an exciting, exciting situation.
It's a really, really important question right now, especially with districts. It's a little bit weird, because yes, I'm running for District Three, but I would still be making decisions that affect the city as a whole. So I think, first of all, it's very important as council members that everyone realizes it's kind of their job to dig into their district, find out the issues, find out the things that their constituents are excited about, maybe concerned about, and bring that to the table. I think we'll really need to plan some times as a council to maybe just have a moment where we present that week, what's coming up in our district, or, or that day even, if there's a big issue in a certain district. We need to be looking for ways to plan meaningful time and purposeful time to hear that out and, and dig into all those issues to make sure that the entire community of Chico is represented on council, not a couple districts.
Oh, that's a great question. One of the wonderful things about Chico is that we are never short on input. We have a lot of very active community members on all sides of the spectrum that are interested in what's going on, regardless of what part they might live in. I don't like districts, because I think it gives people a chance to hide away from certain issues. So I don't think I have to change anything. I get lots of input now. I've been on the council eight years. I have friends and constituents everywhere with different ideas and opinions. I'm always open to hearing them, and I've heard lots of them. I don't agree with all of them, but as long as people are civil, I'm happy to sit down and talk to all of them. And regardless of what district we're from, we represent the whole city, regardless of how we're elected. And that needs to be the way we look at it moving forward. And I think everybody would, I hope everybody would agree to that.
Well, I think even though we have districts in the city of Chico, I think all councilors, and having been on the council, you know, before, I know you respond to everybody, I was always very open to meet with folks. You are ruling on and making decisions on issues every day that affect the entire citizenry of Chico. So whereas issues in your own particular district might be more at the forefront of your mind now of, you know, I need to, you know, work on roads in District Five or something of that nature, I still believe that overall, you know, the councilors need to represent the city of Chico as a whole and then move forward with that to, you know, meet with whatever group is interested in meeting with them. And I think I have an excellent track record of the four years when I was on the council of meeting with those groups and being open to meet with anyone, whether they shared my opinion or whether they did not, and reach across the aisle and do what I need to do to make sure that all opinions are heard and allow those to be heard.
If elected, I'll seek input by involving all stakeholders, including renters, which this council has not really considered to be a stakeholder in conversations on tenancy. So reach out and organize. I am a community organizer, and the way that we move forward with a bold agenda to transform our economy and our society to an economy of care and a society that meets the demands of the climate crisis, we do that by putting all hands on deck. There's a lot of divisions in this town, that is obvious. A lot of that is miscommunication. I think ultimately, as human beings, as Americans, as people that live in and love the city of Chico, we all share some core values, and we need to communicate on those values. There's also a great ecosystem of nonprofit organizations, and each of those would be invited to meet with me monthly to address issues of concern for them, so that we can bring those forward and actually push for that agenda.
One of the things that I would like to do is increase the ability to comment and give input virtually. The city has done a good job of adapting to the demands of the situation that we're in with increasing, increasing virtual input. But I would like to make council meetings more of a community event. You know, there's a large group of, there's kind of a large group of people that, like, is there every week, but there's a lot of people who have no idea what's going on, on a city council level. So I would love to make it an event and, and, you know, almost advertise it to seek out the input and make meetings accessible. So if there's a special meeting where we want input from a specific set of people, make sure that it's not during a workday where it's inaccessible.
Well, I was going to say, within my district, I'm really looking forward to holding community forums and town halls, because it's a much smaller segment of the city. And the people that live in my district will be able to have a, perhaps a closer, more intimate relationship with me. But that doesn't mean I'm not going to be responsive to the whole city, and I think that that's very important to remember. So I communicate through social media. I respond to emails that are given to me. I'm, I'm accessible. I go to community events. It is really important to me to hear what people, their input in as we're making community decisions, because I am their representative. It is not necessarily what I want to do, it's what the community wants to do and what we do together.
I really don't have anything to say on that. I need more information. I'm sorry.
Well, I'm already doing that. Again, I serve, I've served as the division president for the League of California Cities Sacramento Valley Division, which represents the 58 cities in the North State. I now serve on the Board of Directors of the League of California Cities, which represents all 482 municipalities. I serve on two committees, which is somewhat unusual, the dedication and commitment to other communities in conjunction with my own to research how other communities do things and, and how they've failed very often and what they've seen success at. But on top of that, I serve on, gosh, I don't know, eight or nine boards or commissions throughout the region, four or five of which I chair. I'm extremely well-versed in these topics, having studied public administration, housing affordability and municipal economics in both a professional and academic environment. And I teach real estate finance and principles at the university. So all of those, that engagement on these types of issues statewide and regionally has me coexisting and working very closely with other people throughout the region.
Under what circumstances would you support the creation of an independent oversight body to monitor and review police departments' policies and practices?
I believe we already have a citizen forum that oversees it, but it seems like not very many people are aware of it. And I think we should try to have more, maybe monthly meetings or a review where people can go and talk, so we have an open communication. I am pretty happy and impressed with how the officers of Chico Department operate. And we just need to find a better communication stand between the citizens and the officers, so.
You know, I think our police department is, first off, very well-trained. I think they receive a lot of training. I do want to look at that in terms of seeing what exactly more is available. I don't think any member of our police department would be against more training in terms of various techniques that they could use. And I know that that's an issue that is facing, you know, police departments from around the country. And it's been something that's been very controversial and very hard-hitting. And I think we need to look at policing in lots of different ways. One of the things that we did when I was a member of the council is we brought forward behavioral health to actually deal and work with our police department in terms of various issues or calls. I think that's very important. I think that's something that we can continue. But at the same time, too, I think our police officers need to protect themselves and protect our community from the criminal element that exists. So I think there's a good balance there, and I think we can move forward making that work.
That's a good question. I would, I would want to look at where it's been done before and how well it's worked. You know, there is this, this argument that, well, that's what a city council does, right? They are civilians, you know, most of the time, and, and they review, they review the office. But if, if it didn't seem to be meeting the needs of the community, you know, I would certainly be open to that idea. Again, I would want to look at where it's been done before, what real changes happened, what, where it went well, where it didn't. And if we decided to go that direction, make sure that we use the best components of that kind of system, because we know it's been done before.
Yeah, I do support, I do support that. I do think that we need to have better collaboration and engagement between our community and the police force. I think that there needs to be a body, and one possibility that, that I have described is that we actually have a public safety or a community policing commission that is at the same level as the other commissions that we have in our city government. We do need to have an organization, an entity, and let's call it a commission, an oversight commission, that is, that has the ability to interact not only with Chico PD and other service providers, but also the community and represent the community and have an element of accountability so that we, so the community can trust that their voices are being heard and that they have a body that they can take concerns and questions to, and so that they can facilitate this communication and collaboration between the police force and the community.
Right now, I am chairing the ad hoc committee of the council to review policing. I signed up as a mayor under my brother's keeper to review police policies, to look at training, to look at use of force policies, to gain input from the community and report that back to the council. I have found that the police department has been very responsive. They're at the table. We have a new police chief who is looking for ways that he can outreach into the community. He is going to revive the Police Community Advisory Board and create liaisons into the community. I think that we need to first review the current practices, make a request for any type of modifications. And then after reviewing that, if that is what the community feels that would be best reflective of them, then we can go forward and look at some type of advisory board.
Yes, I know that the issues surrounding the police department right now are a really hot topic. And one of the things you hear about as a solution is committee advisory boards. It's a very popular solution we hear thrown around right now. And while I am totally for the concept of major transparency between the police department and the community, because we really need a good trusting relationship there, I think that you really need to look into what I would just call CABS, Committee Advisory Boards. They've been really damaging in other communities. There's been lawsuits. Because when you have a committee, that is citizens overviewing the police department, they become privy to sensitive investigation facts, which can affect the integrity of an investigation, and it ends up getting the city sued. So I think we need to look into other routes to promote transparency coming from the department to the community and really put that on their laps as their responsibility, and I think they can handle it.
I firmly support independent body as well. I, I think it's really important. I think the George Floyd uprisings should have been a wake-up call. I had served on the Airport Commission, and I was removed from the Airport Commission for civil disobedience involving the police war on the homeless and the unaccountability of the police for the murder of Desmond Phillips. I think an oversight body is very important. Currently, law enforcement make up the greatest share of people on, on the bodies that discuss law enforcement, including the current one that's addressing the overpolicing issue. I think the best way to do, to approach it is to have folks that are involved in the criminal justice academic arena to come and offer historical perspectives on it and implement a system of restorative justice and decriminalization of poverty.
We have one. It's called the Chico City Council.
Fully support it. Part of the, I've been part of the push to make that happen since I was first elected to council. Some people don't remember that it was me that called foul on a police officer within the city who had hoisted a Confederate flag on their Facebook page. You know, that kind of thing is not something to be tolerated, and it was disappointing that the city had less of a severe reaction at that time, choosing to investigate me about the, the issue. So I was a member of the Police Community Advisory Board at that time, which I acknowledged was nothing more than a press conference for city staff, which has value, but, but was not an advisory board in any capacity. So I've long sought a change, having real impact by civilians into our, our police policies and procedures. So, yeah, not just somebody that, that supports or would support. I've been front and center on this issue and, and on the front lines.
I would absolutely support the development of an independent oversight body over the police department. I think that it needs to have the ability to, you know, actually make a difference in the actions that the police department takes. We don't have meaningful community oversight of the police department currently, and I see that as a problem, because we desperately need to make sure that the community is involved in decisions that directly affect them. So I want to see, you know, a governing body and, you know, an oversight committee that has meaningful input on the practices of our police department.
Do you believe that the Chico City Council should commission a study on the feasibility of forming a public utility? Why or why not?
Well, in essence, we're doing that with our energy agency, BCEA. But being a utility, you have to have some form of power generation, and you But being a utility, you have to have some form of power generation and you do have that in some capacities in other jurisdictions. But being a solar provider, as, as that becomes a possibility, let me give you an example of something I've been working on for some time now. The, the Humboldt burn dump is capped and has toxic waste underneath the surface. There's no reason, and it has been done. To build a solar generation plant just above that burn dump where we won't have to destroy the, disrupt the soil. So there's no toxics involved. And we'd be generating power that would go directly back into the city, which can also be utilized in other areas of the city to offset. But. This type of effort becomes problematic with the PG&E regulations on the state. And I'm hoping that we can lift some of those, becoming power generation possible out of the airport with the size of any solar arrays.
Certainly we can study that. We did look into it when I was chair of the sustainability task force and at that time. We found that the cost of the infrastructure would be very, very high. There's a couple of cities in our area that do have a public utility, Redding and Gridley. And those were formed hundred, a hundred years ago when the cost of those infrastructure developments were much less. I think that the city can do other things such as providing solar arrays. We. At the time of its installation at the wastewater treatment plant, that was the largest solar way at a race water treatment plant in the country and we received an EPA award. I think that it's prudent upon us to be able to. Look at ways that we can provide services to our community in a cost effective manner. I'm not sure if that will pencil out, but I'm open to looking at it.
Yes, I actually very much approve of the city pursuing the CCA. I also think that public ownership of utilities makes sense. Right now there's a movement to municipalize utilities, especially broadband internet to get around corporate control. And throttling of bandwidth. I think that we should have infrastructure that. Is managed by a democratic body. And so that's financial infrastructure through a public bank. That's real infrastructure through telecommunications and electric and gas utilities. And our water system. We need more democracy, not less. And right now our utilities are provided by companies who have obligations to shareholders. And fight fiduciary responsibility to make profits. And they have that interest solely in their mind and not the interest of the people of Chico.
So from what I understand, you are saying that instead of having PG&E, people should have their own way of providing. The power?
That, that's the, the question. Yeah.
Exactly is what does it mean? So. You know, having a big company requires lot of. Infrastructure and training and management, and I'm not really sure how many citizens are qualified to do it. And it doesn't mean that qualified people always do the right thing. It's better that if we can monitor. What they have been doing for years. That would be a better thing than to try to just change the whole structure. It's easy to fix the problem than to try to make a whole new infrastructure to do it. I mean, they already have the instructor, structure. What I understand is. That you, we want to change the management. So I would not support it. I would rather have a better. Answerability or oversee how PG&E works instead of trying to make it public.
I'm gonna go with. No, only because right now the city is faced with 73 different initiatives. Staff is running around with their heads cut off, trying to get all these things done, giving them another initiative is going to take our focus off of other things. As far as putting a utility together, I don't know what we have to offer. We don't necessarily create water or power or anything else. It'd be wonderful to have that revenue stream. Other municipalities have it, Biggs in particular, and they do really well as a result. The study would be interesting. So I guess I'm not saying no, but I don't see it. I don't see it being a crucial add to the initiatives we're already pursuing.
Um, I don't think I'd be against a study looking at forming one. Certainly you, you go to other cities, Redding or something of that nature. That they have summoned down in Sacramento, obviously as well, where individual cities are not only making money, but providing power at a cheaper rate. They have this with garbage service as well. You know, cities can sometimes pick those things up and do it better than the private sector. Or better than the monopoly that we have currently running the power based business in, in California. So. Yeah, that's something I would definitely like to look at. I think is worth the time and effort and energy of the city to look at and, and move forward on. If it actually saves the citizens of Chico money or the city of Chico money. Yes, absolutely.
I, you know, I, I don't know if, if a city of our size is, is at that place. One of the things that I think on, on kind of a bigger scale, and this is kind of a little aside of the question, but. I, I think public, I think internet ought to be a public utility. It's been done in, in other communities. I think Missouri was the last place I saw that had done it with, with great success. And now especially with children in, in Zoom classes, and you know, that's going to be lasting for a while. I think, I, I think we are. I, I, I think we are heading that way as a nation. I would love to see a feasibility study to see that we. To do something like that here. Again, I'd have to look back at that Missouri example I gave to see what kind of, what size that city was that. Pulled it off, but it was a great success. And so if a public utility would work, it was similar to that. Before.
Well, I, I, yes, absolutely. I mean, I think that we should explore all possibilities. It goes back to this idea that. I've described of doing, of, of making sure that every green, every decision is a green decision. I think that. If we were able to have a public utility in Chico and had the, the capacity to make that a truly. True green energy source, then I think that that would, in terms of, of power, that would, you know, that would be a tremendous step forward. There are other utilities obviously involved and, and I don't know if this is included really in the intent of the, the question, but I think we also ought to consider. High speed internet as a utility and explore ways that we could as a city provide to, to residents and to visitors. High speed connectivity. There are many cities around the country that have both explored this and actually enacted this. Fort Collins, Colorado comes to mind. So. So I, yes, I do think that we should explore all avenues for Chico to run its own services and not have to contract out. To whatever extent possible.
I do think that that would absolutely be worth it to, to have that. At, at the very least, the feasibility study, while sometimes the things that we do to. Make changes in the long run seem expensive or wasteful right now in the present. It's something that, you know, helps us move forward in a sustainable way. So. I would absolutely love to see that and I would love to see. See the results of that study and to move towards having a public utility for the city because I. Like the idea of the city having more control over the everyday happenings of what goes on in our city.
That is an interesting concept. I don't think I've heard that one yet, but I think that that sounds like an excellent idea. I think that we need to be looking into ways to become. Independent as a city, especially in the world we're in today. There's always something going on. So it's really good to be prepared. However, I think right now with the financial crisis we're already in and now COVID, we really don't know how that's going to affect us. College is gone now for the whole year. And that's going to be really damaging. I think. Big concepts like that, we really need to be saving until we get financially secure. We need to focus on safety, focus on roads. We really got to get back to basics. And save those kinds of projects for a later date when we're financially secure and ready to take on extra committees and boards.
What measures do you support to ensure groundwater quality protection for the city of Chico?
One of the things that we need to do is seek out the input of the experts on these decisions. Before we make, you know, before we make any decisions. I'm not an expert on groundwater, but I do know that. We need to make sure that. We're protecting it and keeping it, you know, keeping it safe because it's. One of the things that helps our city run. So. One of the biggest things that I would do is ensure that the decisions around our groundwater are going through. The people that know all about it and have been working on protecting our water for. A lot of the folks that I've talked to decades.
That's a really good question. I think discussing it all, the groundwater in Chico is. Something that I think people aren't really focusing on right now. In fact, and my big concern, just the basics, like I just, I like to look at what's the most common sense, basic. Let's not dig too deep. Let's look at what's just in our face. And I think right now, when I think of groundwater, I think of the pollution that's happening to it. And as a, what I call an environmentalist myself, it really worries me what's happening right now. And I think about. The illegal encampments, the chop shops, the needles, all the pollutants you see surrounding some of these encampments near our waterways. The rain's going to come and it's going to come not that far from now. And if we don't get these things cleaned up, all the waste, all the toxins, they're going to go right into the groundwater. I think that basic, just the basics, we need to remove that first, then we can look into finding other measures to continue the cleanliness.
That's a good question. So groundwater actually has been an issue. For a long time in the city of Chico. So since I think the late seventies is when nitrate levels were discovered to be. Rather high in the city and. In the nineties, there was a program discussed with the county that was put forward. And my dates aren't going to be perfect here, but I think somewhere in mid two thousands to the middle, like 2014, 2015. The city did a program which updated a lot of the sewer connections for homes and also. Connecting water to all those homes as well. So I think that's something that we need to continue with and have grant funding to continue with as. You find all these septic systems release nitrates into the groundwater. And I think it's something that, you know, I served on the air quality board. I want to say some of the information we had, it was something like one out of 10 Californians don't have clean drinking water. And we need to ensure that citizens of Chico do and that we continue the efforts that have been made into the future.
I have since resigned, but I was on the board of Earth Shed Solutions, which is a permaculture education nonprofit. I am a permaculture designer. We did a rain garden project through the city stormwater resource management plan writing through a state grant. And I think that we should expand the capturing of water in the landscape. And healthy living soils are ultimately the best way to filter toxins. Of course, we have to reduce our use of toxins. But ultimately, we need to ensure that the water has a chance to percolate through living soil so that soil microorganisms and fungi can clean that water. We also need water conservation and I would pursue potentially raising and, and moving to a progressive. Utility tax on water and then use those additional funds to provide micro grants so that folks can transition their landscapes to drought resistant native plants.
Great question. Fantastic questions. Look, I was just meeting with some constituents regarding this very issue. The aquifer and, and the Paradise irrigation districts attempt to sell water to Cal Water is going to put in, into a, pushing for the, the inner tie. Is an effort, I believe, to, to generate ownership of our groundwater and allow continual draws. To effectively sell water south while at the same time selling the city of Chico. For the bill in order to, to pay for, for that infrastructure and that sales. If people make millions of dollars, and I think we're going to have wars that are started potentially over water. We need to ensure that we protect our rate pairs within the city of Chico. The city of Chico wasn't even contacted. Regarding the, the inner tide discussion and I, I went to the board of supervisors and contested that heavily. To make sure that we maintain control of our own groundwater and our own aquifer and it's not done in a way. That jeopardizes our, our community like, like we've seen in the San Joaquin Valley.
Yeah, this is, this is really critically important. We have a very, very precious resource in Chico and that, that is our, our groundwater. And there are pressures being applied on this to move that water to, to essentially. Sell it to large ag and other industries down south. And we need to protect that resource. And there are a number of ways that we can do that. One is I believe that we should be very careful and that we should resist this idea of Chico water. Payers paying for a $50 million pipeline coming down the ridge, essentially gifting that water. To Cal Water so that they can sell it down south and then thereby also take ownership of Chico's groundwater. The Chico. Residents, which include 20,000 Paradisians shouldn't be footing the bill for that. We should make sure that we protect our water and I also believe we should have a water commission. In Chico that is charged with making sure that all of this happens and that our water is protected.
We do have a waste treatment plant, so I, besides that, we are having a lot of issues with the people who are. Camping in close to the waterways and the only thing we could do right now is give them a dedicated place so we can reduce the pollution. There and we do have, I believe that our industries. Sorry, I don't know. I know this is wrong and I, I mean, I know this is recorded, but really I, I personally feel that wastewater plant is doing a good job. And we also need to try to make sure that people being self-aware and not go and pollute our creeks. Some of it is definitely self, you need to have a personal responsibility for it as well, but I'm sure we can make some policies to enforce them too. But everything require resources.
Well, I am the chair of the Northern Sacramento Valley Integrated Water Management Users Board, a six county board. And also the chair of our VINA groundwater sustainability agency and we are. Looking at how we can sustain our groundwater to prevent out shipping it to. Out of, out of our area. In Chico, in the North State. Water is more valuable than, than gold. They say water is, or whiskey is for drinking and water is for fighting. And I will fight to make sure that we have. Pure filled aquifers so that our agricultural areas, our economy, our environment. And our local water users will have an abundant use of water.
Any that seem to make sense and don't, don't put some kind of crazy burden on the taxpayer. We actually sit on top of a fairly large aquifier and Chico is pretty well off when it comes to water. There's some other initiatives dealing with Paradise. I think it'd be nice if we could help them. And then also not just the water coming in, but the sewer, but groundwater is not a, a huge challenge for Chico at the moment.
I'll be honest, I haven't had an opportunity to dig into that very much. It is on my radar as something that I need to do, but as a first time candidate, I. I haven't had the opportunity to, to dig into that. So I, I can't tell you. Exactly what that would look like from my perspective yet.
A needle distribution program has been a hot topic recently in our city. Are you for or against it and why?
I am for harm reduction programs. The. Local public health officials, the state public health officials and the federal public health officials, including the Trump administration's OBI task force. And his director of the Office of National Drug Control Policy supports syringe access programs. I think the city should have taken an active role instead of treating it as third rail so that we can implement a program that works for everybody. The way that it was approached was the city just had a hands off approach and it didn't run as smoothly as it should have. And the folks involved would acknowledge that. And so I support it. I think that we need to have a regular location for it and acknowledge. and acknowledge that it's the best and most effective way, according to the data, to connect folks to services. That said, we need to work with NLO and other local service providers to expand detox. The opiate addiction crisis is not specific to Chico, and we also have to acknowledge that and take responsibility.
I think that the question really is about needle litter. The question is really about keeping people safe and keeping them healthy. And when we make all of the kinds of decisions around programs like these, as well as every other topic we've already talked about and those that are coming up, we need to be data driven. We need to trust the experts who do this work and are professionals in doing this work. And those, that's where I would turn to for answers. So I trust the American Medical Association. I trust the CDC. I trust our county Department of Health to help guide us in making these decisions. And I think that the, the challenges and you, you know, the question embedded in the question is this idea that it's very contentious. And it is. People are worried. People are concerned. And what I'm most worried and concerned about is the, is needle litter. And I'll tell you, I've been into the streets. I've been working in the parks. I've been working in homeless encampments for many, many months, removing trash, delivering water, doing service work in that community. And I know what that looks like. And I know that we can be safe and I know that we can get this real work done. And I know that we should trust data when we make these decisions.
I led the initiative twice to get rid of it. It's a horrible program. Enabling addicts is not good for anybody. The people that were in charge of the needle distribution program use the word evidence a lot. Never showed any of it other than to say, well, this cuts down on the infection rate for hepatitis and AIDS for addicts, which I'm all for doing, but at what cost? How many officers, park rangers, children or public employees have to get pricked with needles accidentally before you go, this is a bad idea? The needle distribution people admitted themselves that they, they've picked up tens of thousands of needles in our parks and waterways and greenways. That and any kind of common sense way of thinking is a bad idea. If they can bring it back and somehow do it better, we can talk about it again, but I don't foresee that happening.
Studies have shown that a needle distribution program is very successful in reducing disease in a community that can be very costly to treat. It also is a great opportunity for addicts to come into contact for potential treatment. So on paper, a needle distribution program looks very favorable. However, the needle distribution program that we had in Chico was not successful. This program was approved by the state with no input from the local city council. We had no input on what, where it could be located, what the hours of operation were, what expectations we would have for needle cleanups and and it just is not successful in Chico. I strongly urge that there is local say in, in needle distribution programs in the city of Chico.
I do support evidence-based harm reduction programs and needle exchange or distribution programs have been shown to be effective in pretend, preventing hepatitis C and HIV. So it's very important that we're not taking away something that is you know, evidence-based to help people, particularly amidst an opioid epidemic where we don't have the rehabilitation centers we need. I do absolutely want to push for more rehabilitation centers and I want to make sure that the syringe exchange, it happens in a way that the community is okay with and, and makes them feel safe and also increase ways for needle litter to be disposed of.
I am against it because I believe in helping people who are using, who, who are abusing drugs is to give them help and get them to the rehab and bring them out of their addiction instead of enabling it. Needle distribution, in my opinion, is enabling the people and if you give something so easily available, it kind of easy for people to just stay on drugs and not wanting to become out of it. And apart from that, it, when people are under the influence, they are not able to make good choices. We see that all over our downtown and parks and in front of businesses that they're suffering. And we have welcomed a lot of people from out of area just because we have needles here, which are free. So people are moving here. I've talked personally with a lot of them, those who moved here just because of this program. It's doing more damage than it's reducing it to our community.
Well, I would say that it isn't a needle distribution program so much as a, a needle giveaway program. You know, people talk about it and sometimes they even use the word needle exchange. When I talk to residents of District Five and they say, you know, well, what's your thoughts on this needle exchange program? And I tell them it is not an exchange program. It is not a give one, get one. It is here's your fifty free needles. They're very shocked by that. And, and they realize that that's probably not the best thing to do for our community and leads to the problems that we've seen, which is needles scattered around because if someone is a drug user, unless they're exchanging a dirty needle for a clean needle, that program to them does not make, it's not something they care about. They're not necessarily the types to refill water bottles either or do things along those lines. So needle giveaway programs don't work. Don't believe in them. When I was on the council, I took it to Internal Affairs and we discussed it. Left it on the table because we believe that at that time it wasn't beneficial and I
I'm absolutely against a needle distribution program in Chico. And I know that they, they have evidence that shows that they do reduce HIV and Hep C, which I think is great. I think that's an amazing goal. We don't want anyone struggling with those things. Point blank period. We all agree on that. We want everyone healthy. We don't want anyone getting these bloodborne diseases. But the thing is, the needle programs, they do not address the root causes of addiction. We're saving people from Hep C and HIV, according to studies. People are still gonna die from overdose. They're still gonna die from collapsed veins. And they're still gonna die from the violence that surrounds the illicit drug trade. I think it's incredibly alarming. There is child abuse, very highly tied with drug use. And yes, we're getting some small benefits, but we're seeing a laundry list of risks. And I don't think that in a small rural community like ours, I don't think that the benefits are outweighing the risks. So I think it needs to be banned. And it doesn't belong here.
Well, I'll be honest with you. I think the, the ban that was proposed, I think was a little silly and, and this way. Because sure, let's say that we wanted to ban it and we decided to ban it in the city limits. That doesn't mean that it couldn't be done just outside the city limits. Or since it's a state program that was occurring before, does that mean that they couldn't do it on state property at the DMV or at the fairgrounds? And so really, I think, I think if, if more resource, if, if the big issue right here is needle litter and, and it's, it's a terrible thing. And having two young daughters, I hate to see that. And, but I think the, the bigger question here is what kind of robust way can we handle the negative effects of that? Because with or without a needle distribution program, you're going to have that waste. And so again, even if you wanted to ban it, that doesn't mean that it's going to end. It's certainly not gonna change the fact that drugs are used in that way.
Well, I'm not sure I have to be for or against it. What I am against and have been against is the needle waste. So any program that exists needs to have a greater, stronger policy in reining in those needles. I'm the only council member in the last four years that has proposed anything to clean up needle waste. And I've been pushing for that since twenty eighteen, since February and March of twenty eighteen. And with not a whole lot of success with the council, the council rejected these, these proposals suggesting that this was a county issue and that it should be addressed by the county and the county only. That's a mistake. What we have is a clear and present danger of, of needle waste in our community that, that should be cleaned up and the bill should be sent to the appropriate parties. So it's kind of a mixed bag as to whether or not I support such an exchange. What does have to happen is the needles need to be cleaned up. And I'm the only council member with, with two, three years' history of fighting to, to clean up the needle waste. And so far, without any success.
This is the final question before your closing statement. What do you do to foster constructive communication?
I, I think the best thing you can do is be a great listener. I've worked at Chico State for five years now and there are a lot of differing opinions between departments, between individuals. And I've served on dozens of committees, a public safety committee, the Title IX Committee. And some of them, some of my proudest moments or achievements are, are in those meetings where you have people with very different views, very different values that are able to, to come together and solve problems. Because like I said in my opening statement, you, if, if you live on the, on the far ends of the divide, things come to a screeching halt and people's feelings get hurt, to be honest with you. So I, I think the, the best thing you can do is, is listen and keep an open mind.
I love the word communication because that's what my profession has always been. Communications consultant. Now I've been a communications director my, pretty much my entire professional life. For the very first thing you have to do is ask questions. I think it's really important in public life as well as professional life and particularly in fostering communications to be very, very curious and to always want to understand not only what the issue is, but what the perspectives of the people who are engaged in that work, what they bring. And that you, you do that by asking questions and studying and learning and then coming back and asking more questions and staying engaged. And then you need to echo back and, and make sure that you, you understand what people are saying. And, and then finally, you need to make hard decisions and make sure that people understand those, those decisions. And that comes through you know, being very clear, being very transparent and, and being very honest with people about what you've heard, what you've understood, what you've heard them say and the kinds of actions you'll take as a result of paying close attention and being engaged.
That is so important right now. I feel like the climate we're in has just been so polarized. And it's, it's become so political, especially in our small little community, which really breaks my heart. I think we really, really need to be careful about falling into the trap of group think. When we're in a group think environment where it's only one set of ideas, the rest aren't welcome. We're not gonna have ideas being challenged, which means we're gonna have a lower quality of solutions that are coming out of city government. Whatever little community boards there are, we really need a well-rounded source of views. Everyone has had different life experiences. So everyone has a different way of looking at problems. And I think we need to embrace that. I think it's a really, really positive thing. And it's gonna get us new, unique ideas. So I would look forward to finding ways to communicate with the citizens of Chico that regardless of where we align, I hear you and your opinion matters to me.
So I just go with, go with past history. I've served on a lot of different councils in eight years. I mean, they change every two years. So there's been a lot of different people. I've gotten along with pretty much everybody. There's been some uncivility lately, well, not lately, in the, in the past few years. I am always willing to reach across the table and work with other people. And I think my favorite example of that is when Tammy Ritter and I worked together on, at the time, the police chief wanted to put some pretty stringent standards on alcohol and parties and, and loud music downtown. And we worked together and we worked with the business owners to move things forward. And we got along very well together pragmatically. Although our philosophies were different and that's exactly the kind of work we need to move forward. Worked with Scott Huber on things and others, certainly Ann Schwab. That's something that can be and should be done. And I'm always open to it as long as people are polite.
But you know, and I think I have a really good history of this. One thing that I liked to do when I was on the council and, and I can say in my own history too, you know, I've been I've served various positions when, when I was a little bit younger with the Boy Scouts. I've been very active with my children and either team sports or, or, you know, Cub Scout, something along those lines. You know, what we really need to do is start that with the youth. So when I was on the council, we'd open up the council chambers and have mock debates for students. We'd have it for visiting students to be at college from out of the country. We, we'd bring in and I said, we, we do it sometimes just myself, sometimes just one or two staff members city and really give them the background of this is what the council is and this is how it functions and works. And I think we need to establish that in our youth. But at the same time too, I think I have a really good reputation of being someone who listens to both sides of an issue. We'll meet with anyone to discuss an issue and move forward on it. And I think that's something that we need in all our counselors. I think that's very important to do.
I am someone who reaches across the aisle, who looks for consensus, who feels that my job as a council member and especially as a mayor is to make sure that all voices are heard. When I was mayor in two thousand and ten, we had a rather contentious meeting and I wrote some notes down on a card and let the public know that when we addressed this issue, that we needed to make sure everyone would listen to one another, consider every opinion, respect the speakers and have a civil discourse. And after I spoke those words, I looked at that card and I said, if this is what I'm gonna expect of the public, I better make sure that I respect those, that I behave in those ways as well and value those, those words. So I have kept that card next to the microphone for the, for the time that I have served on the council to make sure that I am the example of what I expect our community to have.
I have studied a little bit of, of nonviolent communication and compassionate communication, depending on what you wanna call it. And I try really hard to meet people where they're at and I always want to, you know, clarify what someone's saying and work towards getting to the bottom of it. Because often people say something based on fear or anger and it's not necessarily exactly what they mean. But we often don't get to the bottom of it because the other person responds based on fear or anger or frustration. So I want to make sure that we have meaningful dialogue and are meeting people where they're at and actually listening to what people mean instead of just you know, throwing around hateful rhetoric back and forth.
What I do, I am pretty open, you know, people know where to find me and can write an email, you can call, you can meet in person. We have a Facebook page. No, I cannot say that. So open communication is important because it's, it helps solve a lot of problems because sometimes we might not agree on a lot of things. But when we sit down together and communicate, it makes it a lot easier. I'm at the farmer's market a lot. If anybody wants to leave a phone number and we can, so I, I'm very open to communication and it's important that all lines of communication should be open.
Well, how do you do that in this environment is, is certainly a, a challenging thing. You have to have people that you're working with, that you trust and, and that are willing to trust you. You know, you, we can't get anywhere shouting at each other. And, and to some extent, I haven't necessarily always had the best response for people that, that we're battling with. I think we all are certainly that way, given this triple disaster that we're in. But, but unquestionably, it, it has to be coming from a motivation to, to fix our problems. And while we may not always agree on, on those methods and means, if, if we are still dedicated to the betterment of the city, then, then that's positive. When, when we have people that are picketing economic development engines in our community, just to make a point or putting billboards outside of town, town bashing the city, you know, that's not constructive communication. And so I've long been opposed to that and choose to work with people of, of different stripes, of political stripes throughout the state, throughout the region and even in this community. But it does take trust.
I touched on it earlier. Values-based communication is something that I'm learning more about every day. Ultimately, as a father, I empathize with folks who have children. As a gardener, I empathize with folks who are food insecure. As a vet- As a veteran, I empathize with other veterans. And I think that ultimately, the communication can improve. I think that opening our city to democratic processes is a way to involve more folks, and so they feel like they have more power over their lives. Right now, the only power people are able to get in an economy that is strangling us is through social media and pushing other people down. So how do we fix that? We democratize the city. We make a city where everybody has a voice and is able to participate in a meaningful way, not just three minutes at a time at a council meeting.
Thank you for your thoughtful answers. You may now begin with your one-minute closing statement.
So the last few years have been a fairly turbulent time in Chico. We've had a financial crisis, the dam crisis, the COVID pandemic, and way too many fires. Our university students are gone, our businesses are struggling. In the last year and a half, we've seen an end to our focus on public safety and the removal of a mayor. We've bent over backwards for law-enorming transients, handed out heroin needles, and let our parks become overrun and unsafe. Now we're faced with another financial crisis, rising crime, and crumbling roads. As your representative, I'll continue to fight for a better, cleaner, safer Chico. In my case, there will be no learning curve. We've done this before, and together we can do it again. I want to thank you for all your support and assure you I'm committed to Chico's future and the people that make it such a special place to live.
Chico is a wonderful compassionate community, and we, I have received so much over the years from this community. Now I feel like it's my turn to give back because last four to five years have been not a very good experience. This is not the same town where I moved in here 12 years ago. And of course, there is nothing me as a person can do individually, so I would need the support of the community. And I would be like to bringing the positive change, of course, with the input from our community members, their experience. So we need to work together on this to bring our town back to its glory. We want to keep our parks in downtown safe and welcome new businesses and new families to come and be in this happy place called Chico.
My name is Steve Brelo. I'm running for Chico City Council, District Three, because I care deeply about this city. I am a father, a veteran, a gardener, and a community organizer. As a father, I care deeply about my children and I'm concerned about their future. We all have to understand that Donald Trump and Citizens for Safety of Chico are not the disease. They are symptoms of a predatory economic system that is strangling us all. Folks are worried about getting evicted. Folks are worried about putting food on their table, affording their utility bills, getting through school. The city has to take responsibility for that, not as an outside agency in a paternalistic way, but by opening the process to everybody so we can govern ourselves. Because the government that governs over us is not working. The time is now to take the reins and rule ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. I have a plan to address homelessness and housing, our housing crisis. I will fight for affordable housing and ways to increase real public safety. We need to prioritize climate resilience and disaster preparedness with policies that place community front and center. We need leadership that creates a sustainable path forward. I will bring all of my experiences in business management, social services, and community organizing to the city council to bring the thoughtful leadership that leads to creative solutions. And with that, we can move forward with grace and community and courage.
Well, thank you very much. I'm asking the community to reelect me to the Chico City Council. My history and dedication to this community in many different capacities, professional, academic, from a political as well as the regional engagement demonstrates that I'm somebody that gets the job done rather than continues to talk and belabor minutia of each one of these policy directives. I've got a history of budget neutral and budget savings that improve the city's operations. I'd like to continue that with the Police Department and Fire Department. You know, there's no reason why we should be sending out firefighters, five at a time, in a truck headed off to a medical emergency when we have much more affordable EMTs and ALS services that we can provide. And it's just a clear example of the way that we change operations and doing business. I banned Roundup, and I'm proud of that. I'd like to continue that work in saving and preserving our Class Four bike lanes and making sure that they're safe for pedestrians and people going to school and people going to work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I want to start by saying thank you for you guys hosting this, for any of the viewers watching. Thank you for listening to my goals for the city and everyone else's goals. I think this is a great opportunity to educate the voters. And in the words of author and businessman Max Dupree, "We cannot become what we want by remaining what we are. It's time for change." We're looking around the community. We're seeing increases in crime. We're seeing garbage and litter and chop shots near our creeks and our parks. We can't take our families out. Our businesses are struggling. They're not feeling supported right now. We need change. So I would ask that you would vote for new leadership, a new generation of leadership. I will stand up for our families. I will stand up for our businesses. I will stand up for reasonable development. I think that it's time for change, and I'm excited about it and I'm ready. And if you are also looking for change, let's vote for it. So vote Denley for safety. Vote Denley for a vibrant community. Ask if you would vote Denley for District Three.
Thank you for giving me an opportunity to share my hopes and dreams for Chico with you. I appreciate the trust you have given me to serve as your mayor and Chico City Council member. In spite of the fashionable call for change, some of which can be good, my compassion, experience, integrity, and longstanding unwavering commitment to Chico will continue to make Chico an exceptional place to live, work, and achieve your dreams. I make informed, independent decisions. I am not beholden to special interests. I listen and consider all community voices before making decisions that impact our community's best interests for a strong future. With your support, I will continue to sustain Chico's values and be your voice for vibrant and safe neighborhoods, a thriving economy, and independent leadership. Together, we will lead Chico forward. Thank you.
So again, my name is Andrew Coolidge. I've lived in Chico for 27 years. I'm very proud to call Chico home. My two children, you know, love Chico as well and are growing up here. But as I see the issues we face and the problems we face, you know, District Five, if you live in this district, you know we are in peril. Our roads are in peril. We have lots of theft and crime and bike theft plaguing this district. We have very poor bike paths, very unsafe areas of District Five. We need to address the problems that are in District Five head-on and right away. It's very important that we make progress at this point in time. I think a lot of people understand that the city of Chico has let a lot of these issues go. And our city is not getting better, but it's getting much, much worse. So I think we need to make efforts to make our city a safer place and make it a more beautiful place and return some of the prestige that Chico used to have. And I appreciate your guys' time and listening today.
Well, I'll say this. Our country and our city are hurting right now. You know, we're in the United States, and in my lifetime, I feel like we've never been more divided. And that's the case on city council often as well. And like I said in that previous response, there really needs to be this priority on listening and keeping an open mind. Because if council members are coming in with a predetermined idea or a political agenda that they're trying to drive, sometime I feel that the other side isn't listened to, and it's like, well, no matter what they say, they're not going to achieve my mind. And so I would love to see council members who made that commitment to be more open-minded, to be in better listeners, and to not have a personal agenda that we're trying to bring to council.
Well, again, I really appreciate the people who are taking time to watch this and to be engaged and to understand the choices that are in front of them. It's critically important, both in our local elections and in our national elections, that we do the work to understand who we're choosing as our leaders. And I think that the most important thing that you should consider when you're making your choice is who has the experience to actually get the real work done. And I think we need people in this time more than ever, given the number of challenges that we're facing. Get the pandemic, the fires, our economic problem, homelessness. All of these things are tremendously complicated and tremendously important and hard challenges that we face. In order to face them, not only with a strong and open heart, but a clear plan and experience that you can bring to bear to actually get the work done, we need people who have that kind of experience. And I do have that kind of experience, and I'll bring that experience to bear to really get real work done for Chico.
Thank you. On behalf of the LWB of Butte County, I want to thank you for participating in these interviews for the Chico City Council.